Good evening. I would like to call the November 26, 2018 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Roll call.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. McGill.
Here.
Mrs. Middlestutter.
Here.
Mr. Seager Lawson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller.
Here.
Mayor Baird. Here. Formal approval of the minutes, regular meeting minutes of November 13, 2018. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. We have one thing this evening. We have been in search of the new clerk of city council and this evening I would like to present Pamela Timmons and we will be swearing in Mrs. Timmons tonight. So, thank you very much for going through the process and joining the City of Belbrook team. Please come up and please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Pamela Timmons solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and will obey the laws thereof and that I will in all respects uphold and enforce the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of Belbrook and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter. And I just need you to sing it. And moving on, that's all we have for Mayor's announcements this evening. No public hearings. We do have three introductions of ordinances. Ordinance number 2018-6. Mr. Schweller.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2018-6, ordinance approving appropriations of the City of Belbrook for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2019. Whereas the council has reviewed and proposed, has reviewed the proposed 2019 annual budget, whereas the City of Belbrook desired to adopt the 2019 annual budget and authorize related appropriations, now therefore the City of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, excuse me, that to provide for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Belbrook during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2019, the following sums be and they are hereby set aside to be appropriated as follows. What follows is our 2019 budget for a grand total in the appropriations of $6,563,677. Section 2, that the finance directors hereby authorized to make payments for many of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper documentation, approved by the officers authorized by law to approve the same. And finally, Section 3, this ordinance should take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. Again, this is our 2019 budget appropriation. It's being introduced tonight and I'm certain we'll have a presentation on the budget at our next regular meeting and the amounts are very much in line with the prior years and the council has gone through them line by line and I think we've got a good solid budget without any excess and I think we're trying to be a little bit conservative on the expenditures announced on the, or on the revenues rather. And so, we'll often, you know, go through as you'll see in our next ordinance and I make some changes from time to time. And once again, we're continuing our record of the Belbrook getting the budget approved and put into place before the end of the year, which is a good thing and the way to go.
It is the way to go and we don't have to do it with emergency ordinances, which we have not done in a long time. A lot of cities will do that. We do not like doing that. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do not. I will have much more detail in the full presentation at the next meeting.
Any questions on council?
None, Mayor.
We, just for the record, we've had multiple meetings. I know two meetings are approximately an hour and a half that we all sat together in a work session and went over the whole budget. So, this is just the introduction ordinance and it will be up for a public hearing at our next meeting. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2018-6?
I would like to move the introduction ordinance 2018-6.
May I have a second?
Second.
End roll call.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Schweller.
Yes.
Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on. Ordinance, introduction of ordinance 2018-7. Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Ordinance number 2018-7, an ordinance amending ordinances 2017-14 and 2018-5 to adjust the City of Belbrook appropriations for 2018 to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduce costs in other line items. Whereas the City of Belbrook adopted the 2018 budget based on the best information available at the time and whereas additional costs have or will occur in some line items and reduce costs as projected in other line items, which requires the amendment of various appropriation levels. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, that the 2018 appropriation levels and several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. The 2018 appropriations amounted to $7,847,982. Some line items were reduced and some were increased for a total revisions of $52,261 for a total appropriations for 2018 of $7,900,243. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. As Mike said, this is an adjustment to our 2018 budget for various cost items that we know are going to either increase or decrease before the end of the year.
Yes, so this is basically a cleanup before the end of the year, last minute, anything that I might anticipate that we need in certain lines and then reducing areas, or one area actually, which was the fire fund. Personnel services were where most of the adjustments were made. We had some of the, some staff that had retired, so we had some payouts that we weren't really sure of until towards the end of the year, once all of those were processed. So, that was the majority were in the personnel areas. There was also a supplemental appropriation worksheet, which I had attached to the ordinance that gives more detail, you know, where those, where those costs were coming from and what they were for, so.
Any questions on city council? We know we also have the, the water project had some unforeseen expenses with the fiber lines. So, this is just the introduction. Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2018-7?
I move that we had approved ordinance number 2018-7.
And may I have a second?
I'll second it.
End roll call.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Schweller.
Yes.
Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on. Introduction of ordinance, ordinance 2018-8. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2018-8, an ordinance amending Chapter 1,060 of the Belbrook Municipal Code to increase rates charged for refuse collection. Whereas the City of Belbrook currently charges residents $13 per month for normal refuse collection and whereas the City of Belbrook has completed a review of current and future expenditures related to the waste collection fund and whereas the City of Belbrook Waste Collection Fund has been operating at a deficit and decreasing reserves and whereas the City of Belbrook wishes to bring revenues in line with expenditures and must increase rates in order to, in order to do, in order to do so and whereas Chapter 1,060 of the Belbrook Municipal Code needs to be amended in order to increase rates by a dollar per customer to $14 per month. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, that the following amendment to Chapter 1,060 of the Belbrook Municipal Code be approved with deletion shown by brackets and the strike throughs in addition shown by italics and underlined. And the body of this is the actual code designation and the only changes are changing the date from March 1, 2013 to January 1, 2019 and the amount from $13 to $14 for normal refuse collection within the city. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Okay, so this is an ordinance that increases refuse collection rates by $1. When we were presenting the budget and the different rates and revenue projections out, the Waste Collection Fund had been operating at a deficit for a while and the reason behind that was because the rates had spiked up to $17 a month per customer and that was the rate from 2009 to 2011 and then it dropped down to $16 to try to eat away at some of those reserves and that, that rate held from 2012 to 2013 and then in March of 2013 it dropped down to $13 a month. So, it continued to kind of eat into the reserves and it's eaten into the reserves enough that we kind of need to stabilize that at this point. So, the contract that we have with Rumpke, it is, it is in effect until 2022 and the rate for our garbage and recycling total is $13.02 is our cost. However, there is a monthly fuel surcharge that fluctuates depending on the, the price of fuel. So, that is not passed on to the customer. Currently, the city pays that out of that fund. So, depending on how much that could be, our actual costs are more than the $13 a month that we're charging customers at this point. So, increasing it to $14 a month kind of stabilizes that to be in line with our actual costs. So, that will kind of stabilize that fund a little bit. And in the budget presentation, we'll probably have to increase it another dollar next year and then we should be stable for a while. So, instead of raising it $2 and it being a larger jump, we figured a smaller, a smaller increase this year and then a smaller increase the next year and then we should be okay for a couple of years.
And just to be clear, the total increase for the entire year next year would be $12 total?
Yes. However, our billing is in advance. So, the bill that customers got in November was for December, January, February. So, even though this ordinance is going into effect in January, it's going to be the billings that occur after January. So, it, it won't likely be a full $12 for most customers. It just depends on your billing since we bill in different cycles.
Any questions on council? This is the introduction of ordinance. We have very good rates in Belbrook. They are far cheaper than most cities. Very. And this is essentially a revenue neutral fund that the money in those funds are only for waste collection. So, with that, may I have a, a motion to intro, introduce ordinance 2018-8?
I'll make a motion, introduce 2018-8.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And roll call.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Schweller.
Yes.
Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on. Resolutions. We have two resolutions this evening. We'll start with Resolution 2018-II. Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2018-II, a resolution establishing a new special revenue fund titled Law Enforcement Trust Fund. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code has given municipalities the legislative authority to create a law enforcement trust fund and whereas the City of Belbrook currently receives proceeds from the sale of property as outlined in the Ohio Revised Code, which are to be segregated into its own fund and whereas the establishment of the law enforcement trust fund will allow the city to properly account for receipt of these funds. Now, therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1, that the law enforcement trust fund is hereby established and shall be numbered as Fund 260 in the City of Belbrook Chart of Accounts. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
So, this is the first of two resolutions that are very similar that are on tonight's agenda. The Ohio Revised Code outlines the different types of funds that are permissible for cities to adopt based on the monies that they receive. And I had a meeting with the police department. This was a week or two ago and they had kind of realized that we were receiving money and we did not have the appropriate funds set up to be able to segregate those things. So, I took a look at all of the funds that are allowed by the Ohio Revised Code and then I took a look at which funds were supposed to be set up for different sources of money that were received. And so, there are four total funds that the Ohio Revised Code allows for any municipality with a police department to set up and two of those funds were applicable for monies that we received. So, this one that is in front of council right now is to properly account for and segregate any money that we receive from any forfeited merchandise or property that we might then go out and sell and receive money for or any money that would be received in a forfeiture situation that the courts would release back to the city. So, this would all go into its own fund for certain purposes that the police department can spend those monies on. In, in this case, well, actually, this one is basically for the purchase of property for the police department for any equipment that they would need to be able to carry out their duties.
So, where's this money going currently?
It's currently going just into the police fund.
So, this is going to be a sub-fund within the police department?
It's going to be a totally separate.
What's our, what's our magnitude of the, the amount of the fund?
I'm still not fully sure of that and it would fluctuate
Right.
Year to year, just depending on the cases that, you know, they are working on and anything that they would take in as a result of those cases. So, some years you could have, you know, larger years, some years you could have relatively small.
Do you know what it is currently or anything like that as far as the amount? Are you talking 10,000 or less or 20,000?
It really just depends on the year. Yeah, it could, it could be much more than that.
Okay.
So, this is basically confiscated property?
If they work on a theft case and they are on that case and they seize a bunch of property that was stolen and you don't have a recipient of that that comes forward and claims that, then it would by default go to the city and we could sell those assets and, and then we would have actual cash that we would take in. Sometimes those, those items that they may seize may be able to be used, you know, televisions, things like that. If, if you have nobody that's able to come forward and claim those items rightfully. So, they would just default to the city. And a judge would actually have to say that that property is released to the city.
Because I know the police department keeps a log of anything that they confiscate if they're required to by law. So...
This is where it would be released by the courts and, and I think statutorily we need to have these funds set up.
I think that's a requirement too.
That's, yeah, that's why they're here. Any other questions? If none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-II?
Motion to adopt 2018-II.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And roll call.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Schweller.
Yes.
Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on. One more resolution this evening. Resolution 2018-JJ. Mrs. Middlestutter.
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution establishing a new special fund titled Law Enforcement Education Fund. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code has given municipalities the legislative authority to create a law enforcement education fund and whereas the City of Belbrook currently receives proceeds from fine monies as outlined in the Ohio Revised Code, which are to be segregated into its own fund and whereas the establishment of the law enforcement education fund will allow the city to properly account for the receipt of these funds. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1, that the law enforcement education fund is hereby established and shall be numbered as Fund 290 in the City of Belbrook Chart of Accounts. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
So, this is the second fund that was applicable to monies that the City of Belbrook receives. So, this is to account for fine money that's received from Zino Municipal Court and it will actually be labeled on the receipt with the check LEEF, which is Law Enforcement Education Fund, which tells us that it needs to be separated out into its own fund and it's only to be used for training purposes for police personnel.
And once again, what's the volume of money through that?
This is relatively small.
Because do we have to prosecute under our ordinances or do you prosecute under the Ohio Revised Code?
Ohio Revised Code.
And we would receive those. Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-JJ?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2018-JJ.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
End roll call.
Okay. Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Schweller.
Yes.
Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on. City Manager's report.
Okay, so we worked collaboratively to hire a clerk of council, which is great. I, I feel like I was a decent clerk for my short stint, but I'm glad to no longer be the clerk. So, this should be my formal last meeting clerking, which is great. So, I'm really excited about Pamela coming on board and I'm super excited to work with you. So, I think it's going to be great. We have posted the service foreman position and that's an internal posting. We had three applicants. They will be interviewed at the end of this week and depending on the outcome of that, as long as we have a successful candidate internally, then we would be posting for a maintenance worker. So, that would be another person coming in. Since the retirement of Dale Wilson, we had done some promoting internally and so it's kind of had a trickle down effect. So, we are still down one person and with the outcome of this position, we should be hiring another person at the end of this. So, thankful to get all of that moving along and get them back up to full staff as we come into winter. So, I know that they'll be able to use the extra help and it's a great training period for them as well. We're still waiting on the comprehensive plan. They are busy. Green County Regional Planning is busy working on taking all the input in from the community visioning meeting. I met with staff from Green County Regional Planning and went over a lot of the comments. We got a lot of really great input that's really in line with a lot of the, you know, the visioning that was presented at the meeting. Seems like we're on the right track with the direction that we're going with that. So, we're hoping that that will go before Planning Board in, in January and hopefully to council shortly thereafter. So, I was thinking it was going to be the end of February since we've kind of changed up the format of the plan, but it's looking like it, it might be the end of January. So, fingers crossed to get that finished up. So, I think that that's it for me.
Anyone on council have any questions for our City Manager? Seeing none, we'll move on. Committee report. Service.
I just want to remind everybody that with the winter approaching, we might have some winter advisories and some snow events like tonight perhaps. And if you can avoid it, please do not park on the streets so that the snow plows can get through. Also, if you park on the street and the snowplow does get through, you're more likely to get plowed in and you're going to have like a big pile of snow in your car. So, if you can not park in the street, that would be the best scenario. That's it.
That's it. Safety.
The only thing I'd like to do is remind people, we do get some heavy snows. If you've got a fire hydrant or some people call them fire plugs close to your house, everybody would appreciate shovel it too. So, that's, so they can find them in case there is a fire. And that's all we've got.
Finance and audit.
Jerry Langdon with a comment. I was, I received an email from the Auditor of State this afternoon about 5 o'clock regarding our audit report and the audit report has been certified for the fiscal year ending 12/31/2017. So, a mere 11 months later, we're now finally completed with it. So, I'm happy to see that. I've not opened the attachment. I presume it's the same as was discussed with us a couple of weeks ago. And again, the audit is a, what you would call a clean opinion, which is there are no material weaknesses or problems noted. There's no material numbers out of line. I think they made a couple of reclassifications. That's very consistent with how they, they typically do it. So, I think we're doing the best job we could possibly do with our books and our, and our bookkeeper, Lee Corde, in the state. Happy to have this done and behind us.
Moving on. Community affairs.
The only thing is to remind folks that Christmas in the Park is next weekend, 5 to 7. In addition to that, our historical museum is going to be open, serving cookies and hot chocolate. So, folks can come in and see the Christmas display. It's in the rotating gallery. And if you've not been in the museum, be introduced to that wonderful asset that we have and it'll be right along with the time for Christmas in the Park. Can you come see Santa Claus? Is he still arriving on a fire truck this year? I think so.
I'm not sure.
Usually.
Usually. I don't know.
I can't remember last year. I can't remember.
But anyway.
We had a lot going on last year.
Come enjoy Christmas in the Park. Lots of neat displays and community gathering getting in the season, spirit of the season. That's it.
Any old business? New business? Open discussion. Nick?
Yeah, I just had one question that I didn't ask the City Manager. So, in the paper, there was an article about the cost of salt going up, road salt going up this year. I'm trying to remember when, how much we had left over from last year's cost compared to how much we're going to have to buy this year. Was there, I mean, it was like 35%. It was...
I knew that after talking to Ryan, and I'm going to have to check this just to be sure, because I don't want to speak out of turn, I know that we are going to have to take the minimum next year. So, I think that we budgeted for $45,000 to $50,000 worth of salt next year, which comes out of streets, Permissive Tax Fund and State Highway Fund.
Okay, so it's in our budget. So, we...
It is, it is in the budget. But yes, we were going to have to take the minimum next year for sure.
And don't we already have one that we have to take this year? So, we sort of have to...
That was on last year's?
No, we've taken everything up until now that we should. So, we haven't had to take anything recently and we're good. But next year, going into 2019, we will have to take the minimum amount.
One year we had plenty of salt and that was the year that it didn't snow.
And I think we have plenty now. I know, I thought we discussed if we had to, we could once again store it, use the township for storage. So...
We're both at the state building salt, are we not, or?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions? Any other comments, Nick? Forrest?
None, Mayor.
On down the line?
No, Mr. Ed.
I've had a number of requests for snowflakes to come back.
Yes.
I've told folks that they're falling apart, they're brittle, and they're very expensive to try to replace.
What's snowflakes for?
So, to give our City Manager a little background, it all started with Pat Campbell, who, who was passed away. She was a great member on city council. We actually had snowflakes we put up that were lights. So, since those snowflakes did become, and I'm sure the service guys didn't like it too well putting them up, I've gotten, and I've gotten a lot of, can we do Christmas lights of any time? And snowflakes are on the utility pole. I don't know.
Kettering has them. I don't find them.
So, the real question is, we went to all the flags, but the flags don't look very good tonight. And so, as, I think it's a valid thing and I've had a number of requests from residents.
Yeah. Do something with lights.
Yes. And I, this year may be a little too late, but I think it's something that, you know, new City Manager and we can all work together to see, you know, creative funding, whatever, you know, talk to Ryan, see what we can or can't do. But I've, I've also received a number of, it was more last year than this year.
Yeah, but I've already started. I, certain people have requested it several times and I've...
I've heard it several times myself.
Yep, yep.
And it all kind of goes into play with the downtown beautification. You know, the flowers in the pots, that would be the decorations for the holidays, all of that stuff. So, we just, once we've got the comprehensive plan adopted and, you know, Planning Board and Council can start chipping away at the priorities because it's, it's going to be a lot, you know, to digest. And where our priorities are as a result of that plan and where we want to funnel all of our, you know, well, not all of our, but where we want to funnel our time, energy and resources, money, all of those things, it's all going to be part of that general discussion. So, downtown beautification stuff, I think that a certain amount of money each year should be earmarked for that and that'll be worth discussing.
Because I wanted to put it out there in the, in the public meeting so that folks knew that I was listening.
Yeah, I'm sort of glad you brought it up. I haven't been, how do we say, approached yet, but I will be and it'll typically be in the next couple of weeks. And I agree.
some of them read up and some of them read down when you look at Bellbrook? And I'm wondering if they just didn't pay attention?
I guess it depends which way you're going, I don't know.
No, it's the way, I think it's the way they're If they flip them over, I didn't notice.
I didn't.
I know.
Yeah, watch, some of them, Bellbrook starts to be at the bottom and reads up, and some of them starts at the top and reads down. And I think if they flip the
Well, have we done the holiday ones yet?
They're not, so it'll come into play when they
Can we do the holiday ones?
Take these down and when they put them back up.
Yep.
Obviously, Ryan this week on decorating the pots, I'm going to mention it, John, but yeah, I've had comments on that, too.
I'll take a look. I haven't noticed that. Normally, I notice things like that.
Are decorations and things like that something that you could allow a company to put up in lieu of advertising?
Um
Is that something that's feasible?
I, I don't know. You know, the bigger issues where you put them up, working with, you know, deep now, which is the key, and of course, there's been some, as Donna used to be aware of, there's been some issues and lawsuits flying over.
What's attached?
Attachments, yeah, and cost to do an engineering pole attachment that you have to do on them. So there's a lot of, a lot of things we'd have to work around to get to that point, I think, because the times have changed, because we know when we put up our fiber line for the regulator pit.
Uh, yes.
I assume, that, you know, we had to pay pretty good fees to have those attachments overhead on the poles, which is